You said you added food service and what else to come up with five percent?
General.
Food service and general fund expenditures and then you multiply it by two percent to get what your contingency has to be. Or your ending balance of the year has to be.
I make a motion to approve the monthly financial report.
I second.
Okay.
Any one of us, it's fine.
It's fine, yeah.
All those in favor of approving the monthly financial report, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Bank reconciliation.
All right, if you look at our bank reconciliation, we have a little forty-five dollar timing error. But that's not a big deal. We have a reconcile balance of eleven million eight hundred and eighty thousand. If you look up at the top here, you will see that our construction account makes up ten million of that. So our general fund balance right here is what's running in our account is one point six million. In our big account. And we're doing pretty good on our, if you look down here on your interest that you've earned. For your bond funds to date, it's two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So it looks like it's going back down about a thousand dollars a month. Hopefully we'll keep some interest. I know that the interest rates at the bank are going down. But I'm hoping that that'll stay up enough to cover a little bit more of our stuff.
Approve the bank.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Cash flow statement.
Sorry, I'm having problems. Okay, if you look at this, it actually projects us at one million dollars at the end of the year. Yeah.
I know.
It's weird doing this now because we have so many of those Menifee Central expenses. In this from last year and you've got to kind of take everything out. So this is what this shows if we keep the same expenditures that we did last year.
But we can't rely on that either with this whole thing, so.
My more detailed general fund says around eight hundred thousand.
That's probably closer, I'm sure.
That's what I'm hoping for.
But still better than what we've got in contingency now, so either way, that's still good.
Yep.
We will work on that very diligently and hopefully once we get to December and January, we can start cutting back on some expenses.
Let's hope so. I make a motion, we approve the cash flow statement.
I second.
All those in favor of a cash flow statement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent a.
I'm going. Can you see that, Mr. Spencer?
On your consent items, all pretty standard procedures, claims, minutes, constitutionality protected prayer, just typical procedures that we do with that. The planning committee, we are finalizing that. The Ms. Franklin has worked with the principals and local PPOs and other people throughout the community. The board does have to approve and there was two people that were, that voted that wanted to participate on the business community leaders. But your list is over there, Lori, of the.
Sorry, I'm trying to get to it.
But anyway, those have all been approved and they've been done in an appropriate manner.
There you go.
There's your list. Ms. Bartley was central office staff member selected, Mr. Bryant is local building and zoning official being the mayor. The two community members were Rick Stiltner and Kathy Ballinger. Parent rep from Menifee Elementary, Aaron Brown, Bots Elementary parent rep Kelly Bots. Melissa Wells was high school parent rep. Ms. Schwartz and Ms. Beans were the billing administrators, Ms. Franklin District Facilities. And then the board member selected last month was Greg Spencer and then non-voting member would be Mrs. Pelfrey where she's over support services. And then the three teachers from the three respective schools, Lana Williams and Tina Spencer. And then moving on through, we looking as we start thinking about the next year. We will have surplus items in the Menifee Elementary building. So anything that is salvageable, you know, such as maybe the gym floor or the bleachers or things that we're not taking to the new building. We'll need to clear that surplus and I'll keep you informed with that as we go through that process. Those items would not be made available though until we are completely moved out of Menifee Elementary. We're just starting to get those items together to where we can have surplus sales next summer and let folks start taking bids on those items. Next item will be MOA with the county of the school resource officer. We will be picking up the vast majority of, well, all of that salary next year. But that SRO will be employed through the Menifee County Fiscal Court and the Sheriff's Office. But they will only be doing things for the school. They will not be, anything above beyond would be paid by the Sheriff's Office, but we will be paying that salary. That will come out of Title IV monies as well as our safe schools monies.
In Kentucky ASAP.
In the Kentucky ASAP of twenty-two thousand dollars. Want to thank Mrs. Golden for working and Ms. Pelfrey for securing that funds. We also will be surplusing, we did our monthly maintenance checks on a couple of the vehicles. Especially the oh-eight Silverado maintenance truck, the frame and when we do salvage this, it will be just for salvage only. We would not be recommending that that truck be drivable due to the fact that the frame is no longer serviceable. And then the oh-four Mazda minivan, we have taken, of course, that was a technology van. So we'll be utilizing the twelve van to help us with our technologies and it'll also be available for other things. But it'll be mainly focusing on technology. And then the van, we're looking at purchasing another new van. Half of that will come out of food service and the other part will come out of general fund. That way we'll be replacing our fleet and then we'll be utilizing another maintenance truck that we have purchased through the bid list. So, but those items have been purchased and we'll need to surplus those two items. And then the other item is a MOA with the Gateway Health Department. And that will be to allow Menifee County Schools, once we do have a vaccine available for COVID nineteen. To where they could set up a mass vaccination clinic utilizing our school facilities. And hopefully that will be sooner than later. And that is all of the consent agenda items.
Any questions or discussion?
The only thing Greg, that I do want to make sure that's in the minutes is that the oh-seven or oh-eight Silverado maintenance truck is for junk only, not to be put on the road. It would just be for parts only.
Title four.
I'll send the title tomorrow.
For no more question or discussions, I make a motion to approve the consent items.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the consent items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and approval items, approve the twenty twenty-one working budget.
I'm trying to get to it. Crazy thing.
It's a coming.
Okay. You guys are pretty familiar with this now. So what I did for you is this. Okay, this is a synopsis of the general fund, so we can, you can look and see where your money's coming from. So local taxes over here. Our local taxes are nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. Now that includes real estate, franchise, motor vehicle, delinquent taxes. Any of those type of things that we're getting from the clerk, the sheriff, the judge's office, all those kinds of things. Utility tax, we're at two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, which is three point six percent. Any of the other taxes that we receive, you can see it's a negligible amount. Our in lieu of taxes each year, they're supposed to be getting lower, so what I did is I budgeted half of what we've been getting. Because we never know if we're getting it. This is the funds that come from the federal or the federal land. Our interest of forty-eight thousand. Miscellaneous revenues of about forty-three, which are reimbursements for field trips. Like upward bound and those kinds of things. Our sick money for this year is five million fifty-eight thousand. Vocational reimbursement of twenty-four thousand. I'm iffy on that because I don't know how it's going to work with vocational transportation this year since we're not taking anybody. Miscellaneous revenue state is twenty-eight thousand.
Let me interject on that vocational transportation. We do, and I'll go over this during the communication and sharing, but we do, we are starting our plan to get back into in-class. So hopefully we will start bringing back the vocational routes within the next, hopefully within the next two to three weeks.
On behalf, which is, it's just an in and out. It's what the state's paying for us. We put this into revenue. We have a matching amount as the expenditure. Medicaid, we usually get about a hundred and forty-six thousand. Actually, last year, I think we got a hundred and eighty-nine. But like I said, I like being conservative with that, especially with kids not in the building. Lease proceeds, two hundred and twenty thousand and that has a matching amount on the other side for buying buses. I'm not sure if this is a, I think this is a one bus year, but I like being estimate. And then that gets you at nine million. Then when you add the beginning balance here. You'll see our beginning balance is thirteen point three nine percent of our budget. Now, to get us to our total revenue of ten million dollars. But if you remember, we're setting aside seventy-five, a little over seventy-five thousand for sick leave that sits on our balance sheet. So in case a bunch of people retire, we have funds to do that. So when you see that, it's kind of, there's still some money left back, about seventy-five thousand for that sick leave. All right. So I think this is what you guys are going to be interested in on the expenditure side. So what I did is I did a recap of the report. So you can see what we're spending on instruction and all that kind of stuff. So our payroll and our employee benefits hit around seventy thousand dollars. Our on behalf. Now here it says two point three, but there's actually forty-seven thousand that's stuck over here in technical services. That's part of that on behalf. So don't let that get you confused. In technical services or PD or professional services, anything like that is two percent of the salary. Utilities, any kind of building repairs, that's three percent of our salary or three percent of our budget, I apologize. Any other services is seven percent. That's where we pay back. See, plant operations. No, I could have told you the other day. It also has our debt service in there and that kind of thing. So any kind of debt service and those kinds of things. And then oh-six oh-oh is always our supplies. It's some type of supplies, whether it's furniture, paper, pencils. Whatever the kind of supplies right here, we're parts, those kinds of things. Property and equipment, you can see this. The oh-sevens, that's usually hardware and software here and the bus. Then any debt service is in oh-eight oh-oh and our contingency right now is four hundred and ninety-five thousand. So you can see after I went through there and looked around, we were able to, to project there. And I think our budget is pretty good. There's going to be a little weird stuff, but I feel pretty good about it. Now, if you look over here, I did, this is last year's. So you can see where we were last year. And those percent differences. But now this, of course. You know, is the difference with this is the contingency. So don't worry about this line. But the other ones, they're pretty close, but in instruction here, we got, we received more grant money. So that's where the instructions went down. It's being funneled into Fund II. And then. Lord, Lord. All right. Student support went up a little bit.
Was that because of the SRO or?
At one time, we had budgeted a third nurse, but in there, we needed to add some things.
That could be because of the school nurse or the, we've got, the SRO could have also come out of that. Variety of things that could have impacted that.
Yeah.
Okay, did we also get, or is that covered by Pathways, a mental health counselor at the high school level or something like that?
We're working on hiring that person. We got a grant of forty-three thousand dollars to work with that.
The majority of that's going to come out of Fund II.
Okay, employment, okay.
The instructional staff went up about thirteen percent from last year. I do think that we increased some aids, didn't we, Mr. Spencer? District admin, we're down quite a bit. We're down sixteen percent there. And that could be, a lot of that where your percentage, your seventy percent is in payroll. When people move around, everybody comes in at a different pace, so that could have something, that does have something to do with it. Your school admin, it actually went down eight percent. And that's because Tanya is now the principal at both Bots and MES. Your business support went up twenty-two percent. We hired a new bookkeeper this year. Plant operations is up eleven percent and that's what I do, guys. I build up those building repairs because we still have to get through one year of Menifee Elementary and who knows what's going to happen with that. And then student transportation, I went up six percent on that. I try to make sure that we've got, we have enough funding in there for repairs, diesel, any kind of off-the-wall item that may or may not happen. But that is the synopsis of your budget. And then this is the form that you're used to seeing.
Thanks for breaking that down. That's a lot. The Excel spreadsheet makes it a lot more, as far as the categories and so forth, makes it more explainable to the, than the MUNIS report. So appreciative of the breakdown Excel spreadsheet. And anytime you can get your instructional percentages only at about seventy percent, that's pretty phenomenal. So anyway, good job on breaking that down. Appreciative.
Any questions or discussions?
I make a motion, we approve the working budget for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
I'll second it. All those in favor of approving the twenty twenty-one budget, signify by saying aye.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
It's twenty-one.
Well.
Budget.
It's this year's budget, right?
About twenty-one.
Twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, yeah.
Well, I left out the first twenty on both of them. I just said twenty twenty-one, so the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, there you go.
Is that okay the way it's worded now?
Sorry.
We should be good.
I had a motion second.
Yeah, you did that. It was, you're going to make me go back.
I made, I made the motion Greg seconded, I believe.
Yeah.
I think that's what I have.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Personnel notification.
Okay, let me. Okay, approved district-wide hiring, part-time custodian Jared Brown. Menifee High School hiring of Danell McKinney, special education teacher. Rosetta Meadows Cook Baker at the high school. Menifee Elementary K-18, Tina Back, Cook Baker, resignation, Elise Stockdale, school nurse. Retirements Diana McGuire and Teresa Cook at the end of September. And no transfers.
Okay.
Community report.
No, you missed one. Right here, the side update. You want to see this?
Informational items, Greg. Item five.
Okay, okay.
With you today, I just want to go through them and let the public see them on, on the board meeting and then we'll move. I think everyone should have had access with these. Matt, I think you have them. I've tried to send them to all the board members today. Some reason Matt and Brenda's came back and I apologize. But this is where we started, December third of two thousand and eighteen, so this was almost two years ago. And this was exactly almost one year ago today. And this is once again, close to one year ago today. Started the foundation basically a year ago. Foundation getting started in October and then still foundation in October, November. Concrete work being done. More concrete work, December of concrete work. And vast majority of concrete work was done in January and February.
There's the walls on your gym.
There's the gym walls. And then the classroom wall started in February. And March, you started seeing the roofing starting to come on the bottom floor of the elementary wing and middle school wing. And then COVID nineteen hit and we were no, could not get up-to-date drone footage and now we're back to where we're able to do probably monthly drone footages throughout the remainder of the project. So that's kind of where we are today.
Do you want to watch the drone footage?
I think it's on our website, Lori, that they can watch.
Okay.
So I just wanted to share that with you, kind of show you the progress that's been made over the past two years. And Ms. Evans and Mr. Cooper, I apologize if that didn't go through today. I don't know what happened. All right, that was a monthly community report. I've already expressed appreciation. The community is working through us with COVID nineteen. As we get ready, hopefully we can get back to some form of in-school learning at the end of this month and I'll go with that in just a moment.
Principal update, instructional support.
Okay, Lori, if you would open those for me. Ms. Beans just report. Huge thank you to all staff for the minutes efforts in the last few weeks. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed and you're so appreciative. We have following guidelines. We get a small number of students in the building, working one-on-one with our teachers. We've already been bringing kids in with our targeted students. Much appreciative of all the teachers and the sign-in sheets that we've done with that and so far we've had a lot of success with that. The admin team is currently working on calling parents, getting updated information on returning to in-person classes. And I would encourage you that if you have not went online and completed the survey. Mr. Vice, is that still open? I think so. Is that correct? So if you've not done that and anyone watching this, please go and get that turned in as soon as possible. Middle school girls' basketball season in full swing with all the away game schedule. Do the spacing in the gym with social distancing. First game against Powell County this week resulted in sixth and eighth grade wins. And Twenty-First Century Program has started with virtual setting and over fifty students have enrolled for these after-school services. High school. Ms. Schwartz liked to.
All right.
Down just a little bit. Like take time to express gratitude for all staff, students, administration, community for their enormous effort in supporting the education and well-being of students in Menifee County. Menifee County rocks. Celebration. Students have been coming into the building by appointment for targeted in-person services. We've increased our numbers for next week. Staff members, Ms. Bethany Manley, CT Allied Health teacher is now dual certified to teach dual credit courses through Maisel Community and Technical College. Advanced placement update, twenty-four students enrolled in AP Biology, seventeen in AP English. Nineteen in US History, fifteen in Statistics and three students in Environmental Biology. CTE updates, Mr. Haney, the CTE coordinators completed coordinator's training. Will be completing Ted's training by next month. CTE pathways, Allied Health seventy-five, agriculture a hundred, medical business twenty-five and the teacher learning pathway with the Kentucky Christian and Grayson is five students. Also have the ball rolling on introducing new student organizations with HOSA, FBLA, Educator Rising and FFA is already active. CT administrative meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-second. Athletics, we are preparing for a home volleyball game and Ms. Schwartz is there tonight for our first home volleyball game. We will be utilizing a new temperature kiosk. We purchased a kiosk where you walk up and this will also be in the schools when we start our in-person classes of having temperature kiosks where it will automatically take your temperature. We will have two at Menifee High School, two at Menifee Elementary and then we'll have one more. So we purchased five of these throughout the district and potentially with one at Bots Elementary. We're adhering to KHSA and CDC guidelines for capacity by limiting visiting fans to ten and as well as home fans to twenty to allow for ten-person buffer if additional spectators arrive. Ms. Lane, our school nurse will be onsite as precaution and access to escort to safe room if necessary. Once again, any person cannot enter the premises with a temperature over one hundred point four. And then our SRO will also be onsite for security purposes. Process will continue to look and be the same for our home boys soccer game for senior night on the twenty-first. And previous protocols will be implemented here as well. And athletic events have traveled with little or no issues thus far. Practicing social distancing on the buses, we're limited to eleven students on a bus and they have to wear a face mask while they are on the school buses. And do want to say so far athletic events, Mr. Eglon, Mr. Ricker, Mr. Haney, Ms. Schwartz have done a fantastic job in getting us prepped for the athletic season. And also we are working on the high school gymnasium and the bleachers project and we're very optimistic that maybe after four times that the high school gym floor will be completed within the next ten days. So and then the bleacher project is scheduled to begin hopefully in October, hopefully. So we do hope to have the gym floor ready to go by the, for the first home game. And it will also be ready for volleyball as well in the near future. So and if you want to stop by and look at the high school floor, it is flat, beautiful. We've got the natural stain of the wood back out and replaced a lot of the green that was on the floor previously and it's all a natural color. I think you'll be very impressed. It looks like a professional basketball court. So very impressed with that and so it has taken a lot of time. We've been almost three months getting a gym floor ready.
And please look in the door. Do not go on the floor.
Go on the floor if you want to come. Also, we'll be doing another onsite visit to Menifee Central. If any of the board members are interested in doing that, please let me know. We'll probably be arranging that potentially not this Friday, but the following Friday. So that's your principal updates.
Site-based minutes. Any questions there? Communication and sharing. Got any questions or comments?
Just want to bring you kind of up to date. We will be having, probably have to have a special call board meeting on October the first. We did have a pre-bid meeting for completion of the high school security and the high school office as well as door access throughout Menifee High School. That was yesterday. Bids for that will be open. We had about fourteen or fifteen different groups that showed up for that meeting. And we do expect the bidding to be very competitive in favor of our school district. So that will be, that opening will take place on September the thirtieth. And then we'll have to approve the bids and probably have to have a special call meeting on October one if you would be available. And we'll do that via Zoom if everyone would be available. So Ms. Spencer will be contacting you to arrange that in the very near future. Other things and probably for our folks that are watching, and I'll try to answer these questions. There's no questions via Facebook or YouTube. We do have several, looks like a few people watching. But we have been given the guidance from the Kentucky Public Health as well as the governor's office. as well as Kentucky Department of Education. And we will be announcing plans for reopening to bring back in-class instruction beginning as early as September the 28th. We are working on a survey to bring back kids and see who wants to come back. We are giving our parents an option to come back or stay with virtual learning. And right now that's running about 60, 40, 60% wanting to come back to in-class and 40% wanting to stay on virtual. So we will try to accommodate both of those. We will be making an announcement very soon, once again on Monday. We will probably have a transition phase and will be our goal to have everyone that wants to come back to in-class learning, to have everyone back in if they select that by October the 19th, which would be the Monday, of course, court days been canceled. We may make adjustments to our calendar and go ahead and may potentially come back on the 19th or the 20th. We're still looking at that. But it is our goal to have everyone that selects in-class to come back during that week of October the 19th and 20th. But also have potentially different phases coming back in, beginning on September the 28th. Of course, we have to maintain social distancing. Face masks have to be worn in all grade levels with the exception of kindergarten. And we are working on trying to create pods throughout the buildings and maintain our social distancing. So more information will be coming as soon as we possibly can. But we are making preparations to start in-class instruction as early as September the 28th. That's why it's very important to complete the surveys. We will also be working on our bus routes, bus schedules. Probably when we do go back to in-class, Ms. Bartley and Ms. Ricker are working on getting our food service program. We will have to feed the kids that are at school, but we'll also be providing meals at home for our kids. But that'll probably be on either on Wednesdays or Fridays. We're still working on that as to what day that will be. But more information to come, but we do have plans to open back up beginning as early as September 28th in full swing by October the 19th. So I'll keep you informed with that as we go.
Can we run in buses normally or any special precautions with them or?
If they ride buses, we have to fill the back of the bus first. And everyone on the bus has to have a face mask on. The only thing that may be, and I'll have to check with this, a kindergarten student may not have to wear a face mask on the bus. But that'll be something I'll have to check. But right now, everyone on the bus has to have a face mask and start in the back to the front. But we can have buses, you know, we can't have more than what's going to the athletic events right now. And we will be looking at maybe condensing some routes. We are asking our parents that to make sure that they check the kid's temperature because we will be checking temperatures once they get on the bus, before they enter the buses. We will have bus monitors and if they have a temperature above 100.4, then they will not be allowed to enter on the bus that morning and we'll make arrangements. We'll have people at the board office. If parents are not available, that way we're not leaving kids outstanding beside the road just because they have a temperature. But we're asking our parents to work with us on that. And I don't think we'll have a lot of incidents with that as we go through this process. But we will have two entries into Minifee Elementary and two entries into Minifee High School. Our goal right now probably is we will just open up Minifee Elementary and Minifee High School. And we'll probably look at BOTS as we go on down, as we progress throughout the school year. So it really depends on our social district and our classroom efforts. We're just having to do everything in order to maintain virtual learning as well as in-class learning. It's taking all hands on deck right now.
Are the 21st century program at the school be starting up at the same time?
Right now, the 21st century is virtual only. That may change as we go throughout. Right now, we're just having to follow the guidelines that is set forth by the 21st century program out of Frankfurt. But we'd like to get back in person as soon as possible. Right now, we're having to follow that guidance, so, Mr. Cooper. Once again, we do plan on trying to have an announcement on our Facebook page by Monday afternoon as to letting you know our plans for, as we open back up. And I'll share that with you before it goes online.
There's no more communication and sharing, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. We are adjourned.
All righty, thanks everyone, appreciate it.
Have good evening.